Mr. Chairman, if I help with, never mind. So just one second before we start, we just broadcasted to the public. We're just waiting for attendees to pop on.
Okay.
So we'll give it a couple of minutes. We have a couple of call in listeners and other people as well.
Okay. There's Gary.
I was being quiet for a minute. I think it took me off.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, are you in speaker view or in gallery view?
I am in, I don't know. I have the, I have on my right hand screen, I have people. I have Richie, Tim, Mike, and there's a young lady and I guess that's Steve Larry. I'm not sure what the
Under the man. No, that's, that's Mr. O'Brien. That's
That's Mr. O'Brien, okay.
Applicant for 90 ALB.
So I, I guess I'm in.
I think you're in the same mode as we are, sir.
Okay. You let me know when you're ready, Connor.
I'm ready whenever you'd like, sir. I think we
Okay, so again, this is the Braintree Zoning Board of Appeals. And this is our first Zoom meeting for our board. We have four petitions today. I did introduce members of our board earlier. And we take the matters up as they are printed up on the agenda that we received. And if anybody has any questions, I take the proponents first and the opponents second. But again, as I stated, this is new to us, so we'll see how it goes. If you have any questions, I think you can either raise your hand and you can be seen by our host and/or text him a question. Connor, do you want to give out your number that they text you? I know maybe you don't, but.
So there's a chat box. If you're using a computer, there's a chat box you can ask over chat. However, I would encourage you to raise your hands so that way we have the audio recording to save it for meeting purposes. In addition to that, if you have another question and you're calling in on the phone and you can't and that function's not feasible, you can always email me. My email is CR Murphy at BraintreeMA.gov.
Okay, thank you, Connor. So let me get started with the first petition, which is 20-07, 19 Wilkins Road. Karen Benati, is she? Is she with us?
Mr. Chairman, I do not see her presently under the panelist portion. I don't, I don't see an email from her. One second, please. Let me just check the attendees. Mr. Chairman, I don't see her here. Would you mind going to the next petition while I contact Ms. Benati?
Not at all. The next petition I have is 20-08, 82 Shepherd Avenue. Linda M. Kennedy, is she with us?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, ma'am. Let me read your let me read your application information. Linda M. Kennedy, applicant for relief from bylaw requirements on the chapter 135, 402, 135, 403, 135, 701, and 135, 707 to construct a full second story addition over the existing one-story, non-conforming, single-family dwelling.
Do you mind reconnecting?
The applicant seeks a finding to construct a 632 square foot addition over a non-conforming front yard setback. The existing non-conforming front yard setback is 18.5 linear feet and the required front yard setback is 20 linear feet. The property is located at 82 Shepherd Avenue, Braintree, Mass. In his own Residence B, as shown on Assessors Map 3010, Plot 27, and contains a land area of 6,155 square feet. Sitting on this petition will be myself, Mr. Ford, and Mr. McDonough. The alternate will be Mr. Walker. Let me see if I can see what the planning board said. And I'm satisfied that the abutters and the abutters to the abutters within 300 feet have been duly notified. Recommendation of the planning board. The planning board. The planning board basically recommended in favor of the petition, saying that they're in harmony with with the dwellings on Shepherd Ave., Ellis Lane. There were three conditions. The applicant, after a 20-day appeal period, obtained a certified copy of the, from the town clerk and recorded a copy of the decision with the with the town shall be included with any building permit. And upon completion of the construction, if it's approved, receive a temporary certificate of occupancy or a certificate of occupancy. Shall provide an as-built plan. All windows and exterior finished shall be designed to match or complement one another. And this approval does not authorize any changes to sites to the sites to geography, no wave compliance. Those are pretty much standard requirements of the planning board that they have usually put on every recommendation of of approval or not approval. We'll hear from, let me see if I have any other thing. We have a letter from Linda Kelly of 82 Shepherd Avenue. It appears she has no objection.
That's a mistake.
We also have one from 85 Prospect Avenue Street. Joseph Fran Fran Kerr, I believe, was in favor. I think that's all the correspondence that I have in my possession. We'll hear from the applicant from the petitioner and/or her representative. This Ms. Kennedy.
Mr. Chairman, if I may interject just one second. I apologize, Mrs. Kennedy. At the bottom of that letter you received, the Linda Kelly was the, was the bill for the legal ad. There was only one abutter in support, and that was Mr. Frank Kerr of 85 Prospect Street, Braintree.
A mistake.
That was the only, only one. Other than that.
Well, who's Linda Kelly?
She's, so the applicant's Linda Kennedy, and when our office secretary went to create the legal ad to send to the paper, somehow it got changed to Kelly instead of Kennedy. So it's just it was supposed to be the billing name on the legal ad.
I got it. So we have one, one person in favor. Okay, we'll hear from Ms. Kennedy and/or her, her representative. Ms. Kennedy?
Okay, I have my contractor. Hello, John Kennedy. My name's John Kennedy.
Okay. Are you a representative? Or are you related to her in some way? Or is she your boss? What is it?
Both.
Both.
I'm her brother and I'm a contractor.
Okay, we'll hear from you, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, so it's just a second floor. The second floor is already living space. There's already two bedrooms there and it's been occupied like that since, you know, since it was built. And so the second floor is just going to add a little bit of, you know, add, add living area, add one more bedroom. Basically, it's basically going to be on the the footprint of what was already there, what was already built. However, long that's been there, 50, 50-plus years. And it's like it says in the in the, the recommendation, it's, it could be done by right, but it would be like a jigsaw. We, you know, we're seeking just to you know, have the finding for that, for that one side. It's, it happens to be on the corner. So it has the two, has to meet the two frontage. And we just need, we just need the finding on that one side. It meets, it meets the frontage requirement on one side on Shepherd Ave., on Ellis Lane. It needs, you know, it needs, needs the finding for that side. And that's what we seek. It's just, it's it's like, like, as has been said, it's harmonious with the neighborhood. We're not building anything wild or extravagant or exotic. It's just a standard, you know, standard you know, creation of more, more room. You couldn't walk in some of the areas upstairs because of the slope of the second floor rafters. So it's just basically removing those rafters, putting walls up, plum walls up, and then, you know, a new roof. So, and it would be in harmony with all the other houses in the, in the neighborhood. The house directly across the street, basically a carbon copy of, of this lot and, and probably built the same way. They, they put a second floor on. I had the permit here. They put it in, in May of 1999. Russ Forsberg was the zoning enforcement officer, Russell Forsberg. And he granted the permit. And it's like the same exact situation over there as it is over here. You know, they probably needed one, one finding. You know, they meet 90% of the zoning and just need one, one finding. And like we do, we need the one finding. Like I said, we just, you know, the, the second floor is, is, is living space, has been living space since it was built. So we're not really adding to the living space, other than a little bit of an overhang towards the front, but which will be within zoning. So we're not really adding to what was already here before. It's, 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 it's just creating more floor, floor area. And, you know, where, you know, where beds could be placed.
Are you putting, sir, is it just going to be one bedroom? Are you also putting in a bathroom? What are you doing?
Yeah, we're going to put in a bathroom also. So she has one, one bathroom here now in the house. And she's going to downstairs. And on that second floor addition, we'll be adding a full bath and a laundry.
Okay. I don't have, I don't have any questions. There's Michael, Richie, any questions?
I have no questions at all.
No, none.
Gary or Tim, any questions?
No questions.
I'm fine, thanks.
Okay. Is there any, well, anyone else on that wishes to testify in favor? Connor, do you see anybody?
Yep, I'm good. It's Ms. Laura Kastner. I'm going to allow her to talk.
Okay.
Laura, you might have to, there you go.
I clicked it. Yes, I have. We have, we live on 10 Ellis Lane. It's behind their property. We have no issue whatsoever with what they want to do. We're in complete support.
Thank you, Ms. Kastner.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to testify in favor at this time? Anyone? Connor, do you see anyone?
No, I do not see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, is there anyone opposed? Is there any opposition? Do you see anyone, Connor?
I do not, sir, no.
No opposition? Then we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Mr. Kennedy, you're going to be the contractor?
Yes.
Are you going to have your sister sign a release, release in case she wants to sue you for the work that you do?
No, she's going to have
I'm kidding, I'm just kidding. Don't answer that. Okay, we'll close the portion of the hearing and open it up for discussion. Mike or Richie, any discussion?
No, I'm fine with this.
No, none at all.
Okay, Tim, or Gary, you want to add anything?
I'm good. I'm fine with it too.
Okay, and I'm fine with it too. So all, all, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Wait, second mo, do I hear a second?
A second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the petition subject to the plans as presented. All in favor? All right. Oh, we got to do it, Connor, by vote, right?
Yes, sir, please. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but the three members voting on this are Stephen Carl, Michael Ford, and Richard McDonough, correct?
That's correct.
There'll be a roll call for those three individuals, please.
Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Should we add the conditions to the, to the motion?
I believe they were included in the
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so that, just to make clear again, the, the motion is that the petition be granted subject to the plan along with the conditions of the planning board. Again, do I hear a, a motion in favor? Of that?
Motion in favor, yes.
Motion's been made, a second?
Yes, second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor? I'm sorry, we got to do it by roll call. Mr. Ford?
I vote a, yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Aye, yes.
And Steve Carl, yes. Petition carries three to nothing. Your petition is granted, ma'am. Do you have any questions as to the, as to the process? You can give Connor a call tomorrow, okay?
Mrs. Kennedy, I'll be in touch, okay?
All right, now, I would usually, usually say, Mrs. Kennedy, that since you look so happy and your brother was so happy, that if you have a cookout, we're available. However, I can't say that because of COVID. And we, I prefer pearl hot dogs, but I guess we're all set. You're all set. Thank you, ma'am. Good luck.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Open invitation, any cookout we ever have.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Connor, were you able to get a roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we were able, so I contacted Ms. Benati at 19 Wilkins. She is on the phone. I'm going to allow her to talk right now. So that way she'll be able to converse with us. Karen, are you there?
Yes. Yes, I was there at seven, but I couldn't get through.
That's okay. We're here now.
Can we go forward?
Yes, please, sir. One minor note, if I may add. Do you mind? Do you have the agenda with the COVID language on it, sir? Where it says the following petitions will be heard by the zoning board of appeals on Monday blank at 7:00. Will be conducted remotely via Zoom. You open the language?
I have that.
Could, do you mind reading that in, sir, along with the legal advertisement, please?
No, I don't. The following petitions will be heard by the zoning board of appeals on Monday, July 27, 2020, at 7:00 PM and will be conducted remotely via Zoom in accordance with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order. Said order suspended the provisions of the open meeting law to promote public health and social distancing. The public hearing will not be conducted in an open, publicly accessible place. Instead, public access to the hearing and deliberations will be achieved by adequate alternative means that allow the public to follow the proceeding in a third-party communication technology that is readily accessible to the public via the internet and telephone. And then it said, tells you where to go and how to get on the, the meeting webinar, I guess. In the new petitions, the first one was 20, will be 20-07, 19 Wilkins Road. That will be the second one in order because we already did petition 20-08, 82 Shepherd Avenue. You want me to, Connor, can I get started with the the Wilkins Road petition? I'd have to go read the others.
Nope, you can just read the legal ad for 19 Wilkins. That should suffice.
The petition we're doing now is petition 20-07, 19 Wilkins Road. Karen Benati, applicant for relief from bylaw requirements under chapter 135, 407, and 701 for the construction of an eight-foot by 10-foot, 80-square-foot square feet deck with underneath storage to a non-conforming single-family dwelling. The applicant seeks a variance as the proposed deck will have a rear yard setback of 26 and a half feet and 30 feet is required. The property is located at 19 Wilkins Road, Braintree, Mass. In his own Residence B, as shown on Assessors Map 3057, Plot 16, contains a land area of 5733 square feet. Sitting on this will be myself, Mr. Ford, Mr. Walker. The alternate will be Mr. Burke. I'm satisfied that the abutters and the abutters to the abutters within 300 feet have been duly notified. The staff recommended.
Do you like me to read it, sir?
I'm trying to get to the gist of it, whether or not you're in favor or not.
So, if I may, sir.
Go ahead.
Staff recommendations recommending favorable approval on the petition as submitted. Staff would like to make a couple of notes. Number one, this is a fairly small lot. It's 5,000 square feet. You have your single-family dwelling. You have your driveway and you have your accessory garage. In terms of putting a deck anywhere on the property, Ms. Benati was put in a rear yard. She would impede the setback, just given the fact that the house to the rear yard line is 30 feet, which is the requirement. So anything, any structure she wants to attach to her rear yard would require a variance. I would like to note that Ms. Benati could place this deck within the left-hand portion of the lot. However, that would impede her driveway and therefore it wouldn't really create, you know, a fruitful situation with the deck. I am recommending favorable approval as the proposed deck is somewhat moderate. It's 80 square feet. It's an eight-by-10 deck. Ms. Benati currently has a back landing with stairs. However, it's just a small landing and a few stairs down to the driveway. Given the fact that what she's proposing will render a setback of 26 and a half feet, I do believe that the proposed relief is de minimis in nature.
Thank you, Connor. With, with the recommendations that the staff usually puts on every every recommendation about obtaining a certified copy of a decision and recording it and that a stamped decision from the town clerk will be given to the building department with the, for application for the permit and upon, upon completion and as-built plan. And also that any, any further building permit for habitable space, of course, you'll have to by, by town bylaw obtain another variance from the zoning board. In favor of this petition, I have a list of names that were in favor. Jessica Sherlock, Jessica A. Sherlock, William Best. I can't read the next name. Is it Henry? Henry Wiley Best, Linda Graciosos, Linda Graciosos, Dennis Talent. I can't read the next name. Jean and Patrick Foley. They're in favor. They have no objection. We'll hear from the petitioner and/or her representative. Yes, ma'am.
Well, it's just me. I've never done anything like this before, so I didn't know I should have a representative.
You don't need one.
Oh, good, because I don't have one. I just have a very small, you know, precast cement landing back there with a wrought iron rusting railing, and I just thought I'd like to make it slightly bigger so I could actually, it would actually be of some use and I could sit out there in the nice weather. That was the whole point of this. And I had no idea that it would be any kind of infringement on anything. Those, those, those letters, all those signatures we have of my neighbors that are surrounding me and nobody cares. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay, does anyone have any questions of Ms. Benati?
No, sir.
No?
No?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone that's on this webinar that wants to record themselves in favor? If so, you can indicate that by raising your hand or I don't know how you do it actually, but Connor Murphy will recognize you. Connor, do you see anybody?
No, I do not, sir.
Okay, is there anyone in opposition? Connor, do you see anybody?
I do not, sir, no.
No opposition? We'll close the public portion of the hearing. We'll open it up for discussion. There's Mike or Gary, you have any, any discussion?
I have no issues with this project at all.
No issues?
No issues. Okay, basically, it's only about three and a half feet for a variance because she'll be 26 and a half feet away from the rear. Okay.
I very rarely get to use the word de minimis in a meeting, and Connor beat me to it, so I'm a little disappointed.
Well, you can use it. You want to use it?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay. Tim, do you want to say something?
No, it's, it's pretty straightforward. It's just a porch extension, so.
Okay.
I'm good.
Richie, do you want to say something?
Oh, I'll say.
Okay, do I hear a motion? Yeah, do I hear a motion?
I think a motion will prove based on staff's recommendation and the plans as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. I guess I have to call the roll. Mr. Ford?
Aye, yes.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Steve Carl, yes. Ms. Benati, your petition has been approved subject to the plan you submitted with the recommendations that the included that the planning board has added, which is usually added to all their recommendations, nothing nothing unusual. And if you have any questions as to the process tomorrow, you can give Connor a call. Do you have any questions with me, ma'am?
No, I do not. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck with your new deck.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next petition is 20-09, 300 Greenwich Street. Jason Perillo, Peabloki Sign Company. Are they present?
I'm here. Good evening.
Good evening. Applicant for relief from bylaw requirements under chapter 135, 507, 135, 904.2, and 135, 900. one thirty five nine oh four point two and one thirty five nine oh five for the installation of an additional wall sign measuring eight point six eight feet by four feet, forty six point eighty eight square foot feet to the existing office building. The applicant seeks a variance for the proposed sign that exceeds the requirements for wall signs in a highway business zone. The property is located at three hundred Granite Street, Braintree, Mass. Oh two one eight four in a zone highway business district as shown on assessors map twenty forty, plot thirteen and has an area of four point three six acres. Sitting on this petition will be myself, Mr. Ford. Tim, do you feel comfortable? Tim?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, we'll see. We'll see if you are. Tim Burke. The alternate will be Mr. McDonough. I'm satisfied that the abutters and the abutters to the abutters within three hundred feet have been duly notified. The staff recommendation. I guess Connor, they're in favor?
Correct. We're recommending favorable approval on the petition as submitted. I would like the board to consider the following conditions below. In addition to deliberation on a condition that limits the hours of illumination more strictly than other signs as a proposed wall sign, although it will be facing Granite Street, there are single family homes along Granite Street, particularly not really in the view of the proposed sign. However, they do live there, sir, so I would like that to be considered. That is reflected in condition three, no sign illumination from board to decide time pursuant to section one thirty five nine oh five.
Okay, we'll discuss the the time should the measure pass.
I can make a brief presentation if that would help.
Yeah, just let me, it would help, but just let me go through this. This is from representative of Three Hundred Equity Partners LLC. They authorized Mr. Pabloki to go forward. Okay, sir, it's all yours.
All right, great. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Connor. This is a sign variance for Ultra Motion, three hundred Granite Street. This is a forty six point seven two square foot sign that would be added to the south facing side of the building facing Granite Street. There's currently two existing signs there for Liberty Bay Credit Union. One faces east, one faces west. Those signs are ninety seven point seven square feet each, so this is a considerably smaller sign. It's an illuminated channel letter, so it is illuminated, but it's a subtle form of illumination. Shouldn't have too much ambient light. And we seek your approval to install this sign for this business so that they can be represented on the building. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What will the signs say? Just Ultra?
Ultra and then the word motion.
What is Ultra Motion? What do they do?
It's a it's an internet marketing company.
Okay. And this is the building within far end of the plaza, isn't it?
Yeah, that's correct. It is right up against Granite Street.
Yeah, but you can't you can't see it from the highway, I don't think, from.
Yeah, no, it's actually right in front of Dave and Buster's, Steve.
Yeah, it's right up against it.
It's right. It's right out front. It's the closest building to Granite Street.
Okay. Okay. All right, there's any, Mike or Tim, do you have any questions?
I do have a concern with this. We we made note of the bank that's already in there and occupying the majority of that building. And this business is going in and occupies a portion of a floor. I don't know if it holds the whole floor. It holds a portion of the floor. What other businesses are in there? Is everybody going to come back and they're going to want to sign on the side of this building as well? And where do we draw the line?
When this has come up in the past, in my experience, what the board can do is make a condition that any other signage would have to come before the board. Ultra Motion does have a whole floor of the building. So they are a major tenant in the building. So that's the reason why they want representation on the building.
Okay, and I do appreciate that and I guess where they they do have the entire floor can speak to the need for having some representation on the building. But again, to use the term arbitrary and capricious, another term that we don't get to use very often, but why should anybody else that comes in front of us, how do I draw the line saying there's enough signage on this building now? Because another tenant comes in and they take another floor and and another, you know, or a partial or part of the floor. And I'm not saying I'm against this. I'm just saying they're going to have to come in front of us anyway, so we, yes, that'll be part of the recommendation that anybody wants to put another sign on that building would have to come in front of us because there's already too many signs on it.
Well, the only thing I can add to that is that the this tenant had to go into a very serious negotiation with the landlord even to put this sign up. They the landlord does not want this sign, the building to be cluttered with signage. This would be the only sign on this side of the building. There's no sign on this side of the building right now. To add another one would be confusing. I don't really think the landlord would even allow that. So they would also have to, you know, any new tenant that would add, want to do another sign would have to go through the landlord first, which I guarantee would not be easy. I mean, obviously, I can't speak for them.
You know, how many tenants are in the building now?
I don't know for sure.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, there are a couple of decent tenants. I was looking at the building's website the other day. Obviously, the third and fourth floor, that's Ultra and Liberty Bay, Liberty Bay Credit Union, which was formerly Fidelity. That was a fidelity space, if you remember from a while ago. Also including that is South Shore Dental Group. They do have space within that office building as well as Spalding Outpatient Center. If you were to drive onto the site, you'd see the ground sign which was permitted by this board back in two thousand back in two thousand sixteen, you would see the monument style ground sign which is approved by this board, which features somewhat directly for some of the major tenants. There are probably some smaller tenants in that building that do not have signage. I don't think they would require signage either. But in terms of what I saw available in space, there there really isn't much space left in that building for a major tenant such as Liberty Bay or Ultra to come into that building and want, you know, signage of that nature.
If I may, just one more question, please, Mr. Chairman. With the exception of Liberty Bay Credit Union, which is the majority tenant in that building, I believe, is Ultra Motion the largest tenant? Or was Spalding or? Or do we know? It's okay not to know.
No, I, to be honest, I can't confirm that. Just by what was available when looking at the company's website, based on their floor plans and such as to what was available to lease, it didn't seem like there was much available to lease in that building left.
Okay. And if I, and if I may please, Mr. Perillo, one more time. There they are. What type of Ultra Motion and what do they do again? I'm sorry, I missed that.
My understanding that is that it's internet marketing.
Internet marketing, okay. So they're a call center essentially?
Yeah, I believe so. And then obviously they have customers, salespeople, stuff like that. If you needed confirmation on their exact tenant space and the other tents in the building, I could get that information if you wanted to.
I think I'm okay. I just, I wanted to voice my opinion in a public setting here for, you know, if there are other tenants that do come through in the future. This particular signage, I don't have a great deal of of comment or negativity negativity towards it. I'm really just looking at the future and what might, you know, I don't want a bunch of neon on the side of that building. That's where I'm coming from.
My mistake is neither does the landlord.
Okay, thank you.
Tim, do you have any questions, sir?
Well, the question I would have is basically surrounding and and I know it's beyond the scope of this is to go back to what member Ford mentioned, you know, what's the what's the what's to keep somebody from coming forward with another request such as Spalding? Now, I look at the Partners Healthcare, which is now Mass Brigham, which is a big, you know, conglomeration in the in the state. Spalding is a member of that. So I'm just concerned that along with Mr. Ford, that we might get another request from somebody else coming on board. Now, again, this is, and I'm not saying I'm against this sign either. Just concerned about, as Mr. Ford said, you know, we don't want to create a neon billboard.
Well, the answer to that is we'll have to deal deal with it if we get it.
Okay.
I mean, we can't speculate like that. We'll have to deal with it as we get it.
If I may just add to Mr. Burke's question. Usually, you know, as administration, we can't stop someone from applying. However, we can sit there and tell someone, look, there's already three, if say this was approved, there's already three wall signs on it. You ask him for a fourth wall sign to face Granite Street is going to be an uphill battle and that's something we would obviously communicate to whoever was seeking to put an additional sign on there.
And I do appreciate that and that's kind of why I was bringing it up in the public forum is that we've already taken issue with this. Regardless who the next tenant may be, we're going to put a sign on that that we've already stated that there's issue with with too much wall signage. Again, I have no real issue with this particular sign and we can talk about the illumination hours. But again, I want to be on record as as not wanting to just have, you know, have that building turn into a billboard.
Correct.
Okay, is there any other comment from any of the other members? Gary or Rich? Okay. Is there anyone else in favor? Is there anyone in favor, not anyone else, anyone in favor listening in? Connor, do you see anybody?
No, I do not have. I do not see anyone raising their hands, sir, no.
Okay, is there any opposition?
I do not see anyone either, sir.
No opposition. We'll close the public portion of the hearing and open it up for discussion. Mike?
Yep, I'm sorry. I think the only discussion here now, and again, I have no real issue with this particular sign. We do have, we want to talk about the illumination behind it. You know, the location of it, it's it's right in front of Dave and Buster's. I mean, you want to talk about signage. There's all kinds of brightness going on over there. So it would be, I think it would really be disingenuous to to ask them to shut down any earlier than Dave and Buster shuts their signs down. That's where I would go with that. I don't know if Connor has a comment on that or not.
Tim, how do you feel?
I don't have an issue with going with the existing, you know, hours of operation that we have.
All right, neither do I. I always defer to Mike's opinion when it comes to signage. He's our sign guru.
Remember, Carl, if I may add one quick thing. Dave and Buster's sign, I want to go on a limb and say it was probably given a variance from section nine oh five, which is illumination, which does detail the hours of illumination. The reason I say this is because Dave and Buster's is open fairly late, later than other items in the plaza, so they would want to have their illumination out longer than other restaurants, retail shops, or any type of store in the town of Braintree. I would encourage the board to maybe either either allow for the illumination to be during the times as stated in section nine oh five or to have its own special timeline. I I would not encourage following the same hours illumination as Dave and Buster's.
Do we know what the hours, Mr. Pabloki, are of the business?
Yeah, I mean, they do have people there until eight o'clock or nine o'clock at night and we'd be fine with, you know, restriction beyond Dave's, Dave and Buster's by a little bit. Obviously, because it's illuminated sign, they want to, you know, have it lit at night to some extent.
What Connor, what what is the, what does the hour say in three oh nine?
No sign may be illuminated between one AM and six AM except signs identifying police surprise stations or other such signs as zoning board of appeals may specifically authorize to be illuminated at other hours.
I think that's more than generous.
Okay.
One AM, that's my opinion. I would, if they're there till eight and nine o'clock, I would ask that it be shut off at eleven o'clock.
I think in the past, we've with other businesses, we've asked them to shut shut illumination or illuminated signs off an hour after close.
An hour after closure.
So I think eleven o'clock is more than fair with this, eleven PM.
That's fine. Yeah. I would go along with that and and along with the recommendation of the planning board that they'll obtain a certified copy and record it with the registry and also a certified copy for the for the copy of the decision that shall be included with any sign permit. Okay, with the recommendation of the second recommendation of the planning staff. That being said, do I hear a motion?
They can make make a motion to approve based on staff's recommendation with the caveat that the sign is not illuminated from eleven PM to six AM.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. I guess we have to have a roll call. Mr. Ford?
I, yes.
Mr. Burke?
I.
Steve Carl, yes. Well, to keep in contact with everybody, aye aye. So the petition is passed, Mr. Pabloki. If you have any questions as to the procedure, you can call Mr. Murphy tomorrow morning at the planning board.
That's great. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Connor.
The last petition. Petition twenty ten ninety, Alby Drive, Mark O'Brien, applicant and property owner for relief from by law requirements under chapter one thirty five four oh seven, one thirty five six oh nine and one thirty five seven oh one to construct a five hundred square foot deck, two hundred and fifty square foot poolhouse and patio improvements. The applicant seeks a variance as the proposed improvements would increase the lot coverage to twenty six point nine percent, whereas twenty percent lot coverage is allowed in a Residence A watershed zone. Property is located at ninety Alby Drive, Braintree, Mass. In a zone Residence A watershed as shown on assessors map, eleven oh two, plot twenty eight. Sitting on this petition will be myself, Mr. Ford and Mr. McDonough. The alternate will be Mr. Walker. By the way, Mr. Burke, you did okay.
You mean not good?
Not. No, I don't know if that was the first full petition you sat on, but because of COVID, we didn't have many meetings and we like and Mr. For the audience, Mr. Burke is a relatively new member, so we welcome him again to the board and I hope that he's with us a long time and I hope we're with him a long time. That being said, satisfied that the abutters and the abutters to the abutters within three hundred feet have been duly notified. The staff recommended denial as a result of the lot coverage. Connor, do you want to expand on that?
Yes, sir, thank you. So just to give you a brief overview, so the Hopkins property is located within the watershed, which is under one thirty five six oh nine Braintree zoning by law.
Since the dwelling and lot were constructed after the adoption of the watershed under 135, 609, they are only allowed up to 20% lot coverage. Therefore, the reason the applicants seeking a variance is to go over the 20% to 26.9%. Staff is reckoned to not recommending denial for the reason as that the applicant has yet to provide a hardship for the requested variance. So as stated in MGL, chapter 48, section 10, as well as chapter 135, 407 of the Braintree zoning bylaw. Permit granting authority, in this case, the zoning board of appeals, make ready variance from the terms of the applicable zoning ordinance or bylaw where such permit granting authority specifically finds owing the circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. Illegible enforcement's provisions of the ordinance or bylaw that involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or appellant. And that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without nullifying or substantially derogating the intent or purpose of such ordinance or bylaw. The applicant, you know, has proposed a couple, you know, stormwater features and speaking with the applicant this week. Whether or not he does get approved, that is something he is proposing to do just just as the right property owner. One thing I would like to note is in regards to hardship, there really, I I look at it this way, there almost isn't really a hardship in order to go over the lot coverage calculation. You know, you could cite that there's ledge in the yard, et cetera. Well, the applicant is literally received the building permit to place their pool over the ledge in the backyard. So hardship in relation to ledges is a little tough here. You could argue that the lock configuration, it's it's almost a reverse pork chop lot, so it has a frontage, but then it gets skinny towards the towards the rear. You could argue that the lock configuration requires the applicant to produce a lot more paving than what would be required. Staff would like to note, as shown on the plan, you see the pools really set back a little bit more in toward to the middle of the lot. There's a walkway that stems from it that features a fire pit and sort of circular patio, which then leads to the expanded deck. That pool could have been moved up a little bit closer and you could incorporate the fire pit into it without really seeing that that increase in lot coverage. You know, staff would like the board to consider that. However, staff is recommending denial because the applicant has yet to provide evidence of required hardships as stated before.
Thank you, Connor. Well, is Mr. Don't tell me, is Mr. O'Brien here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Mr. O'Brien, I didn't receive. I didn't receive any letters in opposition or in favor, so we'll hear from you and all your representatives.
Sure, it's just myself. I don't have a representative.
That's just part of the lingo.
Sure, I had been working with with Connor on this this petition because we got in kind of a circular argument where we were trying to propose something but didn't want to go through the cost of having a builder or planner draw it up to then make a an application for a permit for one structure and then keep altering it over and over again and go through that cost. So we we worked together and said, okay, let's draw something up that could be the scope of what could be there. You know, the fire pit thing we drew enlarged. We do have a 12 by 24 deck today. We're going to possibly try to make it go over and pick up the rear door. So it adds another 10 foot to it. It's already there as as 12 by 24. It's just adding another 10, 11 foot to pick up the door is one proposal and then put the roof of which would makes it adding to lot coverage. The the pavers we drew very wide sweeping because we had to come with, as Connor recommended, was is you've got to have a number that you ask for. You just can't ask for relief in general. You have to come with a specific number. So we had the person that did the lot plan. Can I share my screen? Would that be easier? Sure, host disabled the the screen sharing. Should you could enable me, Connor, or promote me to presenter?
For some reason, Mark, it's not allowing me. Is are you trying to show the site plan, Mark?
Hold on, I think it's just giving me the ability. Let me go look at, I have got it into my.
I have it here if you want me to share it, Mark. I don't mind.
I was going to just move my cursor around here. Send it where you want to share. Let's do do my top window, maybe see if this this works. Okay, I'm going to bring up. Is the is the lot plan on the screen now?
No, it's just showing your Google Chrome.
Okay, so let's give it one more one more shot. Let me stop sharing. Let me say show all windows. That's what I'm doing. Inbox, iPhone, iPad.
No, why don't we let Connor put the.
So Connor, could you bring it up?
Yes, give me one second.
So just to begin, I grew up in Braintree on a leader road where my my parents lived and the six of us grew up at 269 Leader Road, and he still lives there. I returned to Braintree in 2018 with my wife. We had a baby here and bought this house. The from talking to the people who've lived here since the beginning of time, one thing I just wanted to correct is that the lot was defined in 1960. The house was built in 1986. The water, the the water and the Protection Acts came in in 82. If you had built the house before 82, you were grandfathered. But also to build a house after 82, you needed to have one acre of land. So either when they built this house in 86, they should have forced them to add one acre to the land, at which case I would have much less than 20% coverage, or it should have been grandfathered in because the lot, which is restrictive, was put in.
Yeah, we got to deal with what we got now.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I offered the mayor to buy the property behind me, which is conservation land. It could have been added to the property back in 1986 because the developer owned it and subsequently did not develop it and sold it back to the town. But part of this issue, if you scroll down, Connor, a bit, the the developer could have put this house up near the setback area. There's a massive driveway here, very, very long driveway, which is, I think, 1,290 square feet coverage, which puts me over the limits. He didn't want to pay to cut the trees down and haul away his boulders. So he took a hole and he put all his boulders in here instead of paying to haul them away and called it a feature. So there's a bunch of trees and boulders here. So he didn't want to put the house here because he was filling it up with his, you know, refuse from the blasting. Had this house been put up at this line, you would not have this huge section of driveway and what we're proposing to do have an extension of the deck, have the pavers around the pool and a small pool cabana. I'm also an engineer, so I have overspec these things just to make sure someone doesn't go over it. So is the paver's going to be this big? It'll be smaller. Pool house proposed being probably 10 by 20 ultimately, but 25 gives margin for error on the calculations. Are we going to put a fire pit in right now? No, but there might be something later on. Instead of coming to the the board three or four times, we tried to draw something to be able to come up with a number. As Connor said, you have got to come with some number to ask for, which became 26.9.
Who was the builder?
Back then in 1986?
Yeah.
That's a great question. I think it was the Boston and New Hampshire company owned the lots, I think. I didn't get any drawings with the with the home. Unfortunately, the living since passed away this past spring simultaneously. So there's no additional information I can get on the on the on the information.
Okay.
So that's where we're looking to do. We'd like to be able to use the backyard to the best of our ability. We we had some people try to scope out the backyard and give us a layout and they purposely put the pool past this edge corner where there'd be a dividing fence. I grew up in Braintree playing baseball and so is my family. Be able to throw a ball in this yard, you don't want the pool down here because you this this yard bottlenecked so much if the pool comes down, it cuts off anything behind it. If you scroll down there, Connor, you'll see I own 75 feet beyond the fence here. There's a fence here. And I own all of this back here, but it's unusable, as is the part up top here because the pool cuts it off with a 10-foot setback, 10-foot setback, and then a pool in the middle. So I wanted some space that we'd be able to throw a ball, you know, of a reasonable distance and not just 10 feet with grass in the backyard. Connor, if we could try to solve the the screen sharing issue, I also made a calculation for for this comparing it to, you know, what if it was a one acre lot? Or what if certain aspects were or were not there, like I was mentioning, the the walkway to the pool and the and the fire pit? That's to be done in the subsequent section or not at all. But I had to come with some number and I want it to be conservative as opposed to making a mistake with someone having a person put in a a lot or some some paver and causing a problem for me.
Mr. O'Brien, we got to deal with what is on the ground. And what would have been or could have been. So let's try to stick with what what we have and work with that, please.
So so we're at 26%. I I'm putting in dry wells, but my understanding is that the the spirit of the the ordinance was to be able to recharge the groundwater and not block that groundwater from hitting the ground. So the 2,000, I think, 200 square foot of the house is all going to be downspout channeled into the concrete downspouts. I've got the emails I've been working on with Cynthia O'Connell in Stormwater, who approved the design. We're using Pembroke concrete, precast concrete wells with the two feet of rock to be meeting with the water level, which is the water table, what, six feet in this particular area? So we're doing that so that 2,000 square foot effectively comes out of the calculation from what we're trying to do from the spirit of of this. So we are moving ahead with that already anyway. That's that's going to happen to manage the water and not have it go on to the driveway and then down into the stormwater discharge. It'll go into the ground and the gravel and the the dry structure that they're building. So I'm just trying to ask for the ability to try to use the lot and make a nice backyard and be with my family.
So from what I can see is around the pool you have decking.
Right.
Is that concrete or paved?
It's proposed to be pavers.
Pavers. And you're going to have your pool, you asking to have your pool house on the pavers?
Yes, yeah, that so instead of making a separate floor, they said just run the pavers in so no one trips.
Right, okay. Now, going from your deck on the house, you have a walkway to to a fire pit. How much con how much paving or concrete will take up that sort of semi circle there for the fire pit?
That's a good question. Let me pull up my spreadsheet. Hold on.
If you don't have a fire pit, will that save you some calculations?
Absolutely, yeah. It's it's on the order of 400 square feet, I believe.
And is the fire pit necessary for what you are proposing?
No, it could be the accessory. It's it's not. It's not a must, no.
And how how old are your children?
I have a one-year-old girl.
So she's got away before she toasts marshmallows, which you can probably do over a, I don't know where you can do it. I haven't done it in so long.
I could I could do it on the grill.
Do it on the grill, yeah. Okay. And of course, just looking at your lot, it is a it is a very unusually shaped lot, which is one of the criteria in section 10. As Connor indicated it, it looks like a reversed pork chop or I'll say lamb chop, whatever. Mike or Richard, do you have any comments so far?
You know, I I, Mr. Chairman, I I've heard the applicant talk about what he could do and, you know, we could, it seems to me like there might be some legal room to drop down the lot coverage a little bit. The pavers don't have to be quite so much. The the fire pit doesn't necessarily have to be there. I don't know, we can't really vote on what might happen and what, you know, if we can do something different. You know, personally, when I first looked at this, and I've said this in meetings before, these are quality of life issues to me. You know, somebody wants to put a swimming pool in their their yard and a pool house. And most of the time I'm all for it. But there's a there's a plan in place that this is it exactly. And what the applicant is saying now is, well, I might do this and I might do that. And it's hard to vote on, you know, what we could do. And I put it together a number because I wanted to be conservative with my number and I could do it a little bit smaller. And it might not only be 20 feet on the on the the pool house. And quite frankly, if I had a 250 square foot pool house, my wife might make me live in there. So I'm I'm all for cutting that down a little bit. But again, I'm a little confused by this whole process because, like I said, at first blush and and with my history of of, like I said, feeling that these are quality of life issues, I was all for it, looking at the the shape of the lot. And if these lines were straight and, you know, would it, could it, should it? But when I'm listening to the applicant saying, well, I might not do it this way, the it might only be 20 feet, I might not put the deck over all the way. We need to have something definitive and I I don't know how to vote on this with a maybe. That's kind of, I'm a little confused by this right now.
Much my apologies.
Looking at the, excuse me, let me finish. Looking at the plan, the way it stands is one thing, but listening to the 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 other, I don't know, ideas that might come about, I I really think we need to vote on something and and not what might what we might do. And that's kind of where where my confusion lies.
Now, Mr. O'Brien, in in line with what Mr. Ford said, when we usually vote on something and we have a plan, we usually make it subject to the plan. With what you're proposing and what you testify to is we we have nothing to make it subject to definitively. I personally am not opposed to you having a pool. Actually, the size of it really doesn't matter to me. The pool house, that I'm fine with that too, but I I think that what you're talking about, the dry wells, I think that's a great idea to discharge the water back into the ground. As far as the fire pit, I think that's not necessary and I understand why some people like them. But as Mike said, maybe a 250 square foot pool house could fit the both of us because I why, Mike, would you mind a roommate in there?
Not at all.
Because you you may be able to make that a little smaller. And but as as far as the pool in a pool house goes, I I don't think that myself or Mr. Ford, and I haven't asked Mr. McDonough. But I think I know Richie enough to say he doesn't particularly mind a pool in a pool house either. But I'll let him speak for himself. So I think maybe that you ought to come in with an amended plan that we can can vote on definitively and say, subject to the plan that you presented, not with if, you know, that's where I tried to keep you on track when you said if I had an acre or so on. We've got to deal with what we're looking at. And I think with some tweaks, if you will, that it would be a lot easier for us to look at it and say it would be subject to a a plan. Richie, what do you think?
Yeah, so well, I'll keep it brief and I concur with member Ford. And I did hear, of course, Chairman Kyle, not to reiterate, but I will, that, you know, we have to vote with what's in front of us. It's that simple. And this would be a problem to me right now in the scope, only because, no, Chairman Kyle's right. Pool, pool house, I have a shed now. I'm I'm already sleeping in that. So if you could triple bunk, if you could triple bunk the height, that's under 35 feet. But no, I I just for a little bit of humor, but the reality is we understand what you want to do. And I just think it just needs to go to the drawing board and reduce the size in whatever. I thought Chairman Kyle made a good, you know, suggestion with with. suggestion without the fire pit and certain things like that. But that's up to you. But I wouldn't be comfortable just voting for it with this, the way it's laid out now.
Mr. O'Brien, what would you like to do? Well, we can continue this for a chance for you to tweak your plan and come in with a final drawing, if you will, of it. Or you can... I would allow you to withdraw this completely and start over. It'll cost you more money, but we're willing to... I'm willing to continue this so that you can amend your plan if that's something that you would like to do.
Sure, that's no problem. And my apologies for the... Talking about doing things small, I was sort of advised to be open to suggestions from the board if they wanted to just reduce the scope in different areas. I'm flexible to what you folks would like to see. So, I like the recommendations. We can continue and I can go and shrink the scope of the things we talked about and go with that. That's not a problem at all. I'm flexible on trying to work with the process my first time going through it, so.
I personally think that the dry wells are a good idea to discharge the water back into the ground rather than have it just lay on top and cause some water issues for you later on. I don't know if there are. But as far as a swimming pool and a poolhouse, I really don't have any objection as long as it's not, the poolhouse doesn't go on to end up looking like an overnight camp.
It's meant to give shade because the lot's very much in the sun.
Is it going to be open in the front, you mean?
Yes, yeah. It's open. It's mainly, it's gonna have a roof for the shade and then I have a back wall because the equipment's behind there.
Yeah.
You have the pumps and the things. It's about, probably about 10-foot wide of stuff they put back there.
Yeah.
I want to cover that so people don't see it and don't like it, so.
No, I understand. Mike and I, I think, both understand that.
Yeah, no, I agree. Like I said, it's a quality of life issue. I want you to have the pool. I want you to have the poolhouse. You know, absolutely. I know that staff gets a little upset with me because I understand where that coming from. There's the letter of the law. And when we talk about hardships, especially with the variance in place, it's hard to approve a variance, which is what you're asking us to do on this. And it's, you know, that's why we have zoning. It really is. And that's why we have a zoning board. So, having to ask for a variance is a big deal. Getting back to the dry wells and the discharging, that's all well and good, but quite frankly, it's irrelevant when it comes to this approval or not approving this project. I think it's great that you're doing it, but I hope you're not doing it to try to sway a vote because it's really, they're two separate things. That's kind of where I'm coming from. It's... The lot coverage is one thing. The variance for lot coverage is one thing. That you're doing something with Stormwater, I think, is a great thing to do. It's the right thing to do, but it really has no bearing on whether or not we approve the variance for lot coverage.
It's something I believe in, so.
Yeah. Okay, so, Mr. O'Brien, are you asking us to continue this?
To continue?
Is one month enough time for you?
I think so, yes.
Okay. So, I'm going to ask that it's on the record that you agreed to continue this for one month and put everything else off the decision period for, continue all of that for at least another 30 days. Connor, I don't know if you need something in writing. I think we would like to have something from Mr. O'Brien. I don't know if you want to, if you have a chance to go into Town Hall and see Connor and have him sign a mutually agreed-upon extension.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. I can have that prepared for tomorrow. So, tomorrow, 10:00, whenever you're around, definitely come in.
Thanks, Connor.
And we're open till 7:00 PM tomorrow.
Oh, good, good. Thank you.
So.
Do you have any further questions, Mr. O'Brien?
No, no, thank you for the help and explanations. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, sir. We wait to see you next month.
We'll see you then.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Connor. Thanks, everyone.
No problem.
Thank you.
Connor, I think we have some minutes to vote on.
Corrected. We got a motion to continue that public hearing to August, sir.
Yeah. Do I hear a motion to continue Mr. O'Brien's petition till the next meeting in August?
Both.
And seconded?
Second.
We'll have a roll call. It's just the voting members. Mr. Ford?
Aye, yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Aye, yes.
Steve Carl?
Aye, yes. Aye, aye, yes. So, that's, I guess, unanimous. All right. Now, Connor, I guess we have to go to the minutes for several months.
Correct. Would you like me to list them off, sir?
Would you please?
Yep. So, we have... Just so everyone's well aware, these are the Chapter 40B minutes from the Holland comprehensive permit application, the park side apartments and condominiums. The approval minutes are in as ordered, August 1st, 2019, September 23rd, 2019, October 7th, 2019, October 23rd, 2019, November 20th, 2019, December 2nd, 2019, and December 16th, 2019.
Does anyone get a chance to make any corrections or comments to be added to the minutes that they don't think were included?
I was fine with them the way they read, but I really just look to make sure that I'm not misrepresented when I read minutes.
All right. Do I hear a second to accept the minutes?
Second.
Do I hear a motion, first of all, to accept the minutes?
Can we accept all these minutes with one motion?
I would hope so. Connor, can we?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve all minutes as stated.
Mr. McDonough, second?
Second motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. McDonough?
Aye, yes.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Burke, I don't know if you were present during those minutes?
I was not. I was not. So, I need to abstain.
Okay. And Steve Carl, aye, yes, to accept the minutes. So, the minutes have been accepted. Connor, is there any more house cleaning business?
No. Besides what I mentioned in the beginning, August is looking fairly loaded in terms of materials. We are having seven new petitions. In addition to that, we have one continuing petition. In speaking with Melissa, and obviously you guys are made very well aware in that letter that was given to you by Liberty Grove LLC, if the processes that they're currently underway in regards to rezoning and CPC action, if those don't come to fruition, then we could see this on the August agenda. So, I do want to make that known. In addition, decision plates. So, we approved three petitions tonight, two variances and one finding. I will need, let me see. Give me one second. I'm pretty sure everyone will have to come in.
Give me one moment. I'll be right back.
Right ahead.
Connor, if it's not... If it's okay to ask, I guess, what seems to be the sticking point with Liberty Grove? Or can we even discuss that?
I can't really go into detail, but I can give you an update. They were before CPC tonight and it was a positive meaning and it seems to be heading in a positive trend. I believe next they go before the Subcommittee of the Council. Really, what's on the table are two parts. It's right now the rezone and as well as the CPC appropriation for purchases of the land in the back. And right now, it's making its way through CPC in the council. Went through CPC this afternoon.
So, the applicant is really just keeping all options available to them then?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, members, for allowing me to take a moment.
Just... So, I'm gonna need all five of you to come in at some point, either this week or next week. We have two weeks to produce a decision. So, within the next two weeks, whenever it's available, come in. I'll have decision plates at the front counter. Either myself, Louise, Christine, Melissa, one of us will be here. Melissa's on vacation for the next couple of weeks, but I'll be out at the end of this week on Tuesday, I mean, on Thursday and Friday. But tomorrow, Wednesday, next week, whenever you're around, just stop by and I'll have you sign the decision plate. Other than that, stay tuned because August, August, I'm gonna try and get all the materials to you a week before, not the Wednesday, not the Thursday, a week before, so that we have them beforehand. And it's a lot more smoother and that way you're well-prepared, especially if we have to adjutant 40B, which I hope we do not. But if we do, I want to have those to you as soon as you have them, okay?
Connor, I'll be there tomorrow morning to sign the plate.
Yeah, I won't be there until next week. But speaking of the August meeting, there is no possibility of that happening in person. Is that a true statement?
I would say that's a true statement, yes. I don't believe we could meet social distancing requirements and I don't think we...
Probably as a board, but not for the public to come in is what I'm assuming.
Correct, yeah.
I'm just thinking that a 40B project during a Zoom meeting is gonna be difficult at best.
It is going to be difficult, but we aren't in the luxury of picking and choosing, unfortunately, in applications. Because if we're showing a track history of having meetings to sit there and say, oh, you can't go, although we are, although our timelines are suspended, given the, you know, executive order and approved legislation from back in March, we just aren't in a position to sit there and say, hey, you can go, but you can't and vice versa. So...
Mike, I asked the same question. And evidently, the 40B material will just be a, not a full-fledged hearing, but a outline of what is proposed.
Sort of an introductory.
Okay, okay, okay.
So, I think advised.
Yeah, I asked that same question, Mike.
Yeah. Other than that, guys...
One question, Connor, if I could.
Go ahead.
On next month's meeting, if... I was fine with getting this electronically, but I might want to take the hard copy for next month's meeting, only because there's, you know, a lot of information there and I just want to be sure I have it.
And you're running out of paper, Richie.
Yeah. And remember, Ford already says, good chance it's gonna be Zoom. That's the discussion. That was another question, but...
Cool. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, members, very much for our first Zoom meeting. Think it went pretty well. And is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
And a seconded by anyone?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn this meeting. And again, I thank you all very much for helping.
Do we need a roll call vote on this as well to adjourn?
Do we need a roll call, Connor, or do we?
For records purposes, please.
Okay, Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. McDonough?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Steve Carl, yes, to adjourn. Thank you all very much and have a good week.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.